We'll begin our evening with a pledge of allegiance followed by the invocation. Please join me.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for letting us all gather here today. We thank you for letting us just reside and be here in this great city and this great nation that we have. We just ask for guidance, wisdom, and the items forthcoming here tonight. Just guide us and let us make the best decisions possible for our residents of Springdale. We ask that you're here with all our families here presented here and just protect us. Ask for protection, security overall or Springdale, and we're grateful for that. We give you all the praise and all the glory. Amen.
This is called to order. Let's begin with the roll call, please.
Brent Couch.
Here.
Chris Hussein.
Here.
Clement Ogungemi. Garrett Harland.
Here.
Howard Austin.
Here.
Jennifer Keith.
Here.
Mark Cloud.
Here.
Ray Cordial.
Here.
Teresa Reynold.
Here.
Thank you. Can we have approval of minutes for May 6, 2025?
We approve the minutes as drafted.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. I pass the 7-0. Before we do table items, the planning director has a comment or two.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to inform you that Ginny up here is doing the voting for IT or staff. If there's any, if there's any needed things between jumping between the PowerPoint and voting. And then, second of all, for applicants and representatives, just be aware that Springdale and other municipalities are being targeted just for potential scams with altered invoices.com impersonating city employees. So if you have made it as far to be on our agenda and be here, you have paid the necessary application fees. So if you get a follow-up invoice and have any questions about it, please call because it is most likely not really from the city. So please call and confirm. Thank you.
Thank you for that. We'll begin tonight with mentioning the tabled items. These are items we will not hear tonight because they have been tabled. First one is L25-15. R25-34. R25-36. PP25-10. B25-36. And W25-21. That's all the table items for tonight. So our first item up to review will be a large-scale development with two variance requests. This is for Robinson Heights Plaza. One variance is for reduction of required parking spaces. The second variance is for commercial design standards, both entryways and landscaping. This will be presented by Bates &amp; Associates. There he is.
Jeff Bates with Bates &amp; Associates, the architect, is also here to help with questions that you may have and will help explain anything you might need to know.
Maybe talk about your variances and reasoning for those.
I can talk about the parking variance. They were wanting two restaurants, but really, the more we've looked at it and gone back and forth, the owners decided to remove one of the middle buildings. So we really only need a variance for 10 parking spaces instead of 22.
And that was the sheet that I just passed out to you guys. I just wanted to be able to show you a visual to go along with what he was going to propose.
Doesn't really change anything other than adding a few more parking spaces in the rear of the building.
Any comments on the commercial design standards or you want the architect to speak?
Was that the?
Uh, entryways and landscaping.
Uh, the landscaping was the typical foundation landscaping, but we moved it to the side so we have the same amount. We just didn't put it in the rear. The entryway, I'll have to let the architect speak to that when he gets in.
We'll let him walk up here. State your name.
Hello, my name is Willner Dubon with Relevant Studio.
Uh, I guess the variance request for entryways, can you explain that a little bit while you're requesting variance?
Because of the orientation of the building, it's hard to get that entryway to face the main road. So we're adding glass to that side just to make it look like an entry. But essentially, the entry is going to be facing east.
So the, the building DL2 on the bottom of this page that we're looking at that would be facing the main street, that's actually the drive-through lane? Is that what I'm seeing?
Yeah, that's correct. It's a narrow side, as you can see. Ideally, we want to turn it 90 degrees, but we can't on this, on this option.
Can you go back to the previous? One more. Yeah, right there. Yeah, I see you wrapped the glass around to try to give it a little bit more of a side look.
Yes, sir.
Normally, we would not like a drive-through lane facing the main street, for sure. Staff comments?
Jeff, can we confirm what this new parking request would be?
For 10 spaces.
So for 60 stalls?
Yes.
Okay. So in addition to the standard planning comments, we do have a request to reduce the parking required spaces from 70 to 60. This development has also requested a variance from commercial design standards, which we went over for the building foundation landscaping requirements along the northwest and south facades. Additionally, a variance has been sought to waive the entryway requirements mandating customer entrances on the building facade that faces the public right-of-way.
Engineering comments. Submit approved R dot permit prior to construction. And then, I'd like a little more detail on the filter strip and the level spreader on the east side. And I think we need to look at the landscaping that we choose there and just maybe be a little bit more intentional about that.
Any further comments by staff? Any public comment? About commissioners?
Before we propose a vote, I just want to clarify on whether the vote that you're going to request was the original five-suite site plan that was submitted and in the packet that we saw? Or if you're going to be seeking a vote on this new layout with the increased parking reduced?
The new layout with the increased parking.
So that's with four units?
Yes.
Is there, um, it doesn't, you don't show a canopy. Is there any, I don't know if we have any, um, like, I would not want to see a canopy over that drive-through that faces the main street. Is there any language we can put to make sure there's no canopy over the drive-through window? Are y'all good with that? Does that make sense? Something that stands way out that, because that?
Is, is three feet too far out?
No.
Okay, because that's what we're proposing.
Yeah, I saw the image. It was fine. I just don't want to see, you know, a Chick-fil-A canopy, if you will. Although, we love those people. Well, yeah, what you show here is fine. It's because, I mean, what we're all, we prefer a front-facing facade. Obviously, we're not going to have that, but what you've done is try to minimize the effect of that as best you can. And I appreciate that. So I just want to make sure that, that continues. Commissioners, we have two variances. Do you want to take it all together or separate them? Thoughts?
Take them together.
Is that good for everybody? So we'll be voting on these variances all as one. To remind everyone, we're reducing the parking requirements by 10 from what's typically. And then, the landscaping is moved around the perimeter, but we have the same amount of landscaping. And entryway has been moved from the front face to the east side. So I need a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Thank you. Variance is passed 9-0. Then we need a large-scale. This will be motion to subject to staff comments.
Motion subject to staff comments.
I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. That also passes 9-0.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is rezoning. First up to review is R25-32, 412 Building Company LLC, presented by Clint Carstaller.
Hello, Clint Carstaller, OCK Civil Engineering. We're just seeking a rezone, just to allow a drive-through in the lot adjacent, right in front of the northwest corner of Sancho. It's currently zoned C2.
So we call for the vote. Staff comments?
This rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan and is recommended for approval. Improve the city's economic base and tax structure through the promotion of healthy, stable commercial concentrations. Assure adequate land allocation for commercial areas of sufficient size and proper locations. And encourage the development of regional commercial areas that accommodate a variety of wholesale, retail, service, and office uses where the highest traffic volumes and greatest utility demands can be served with more extensive outdoor display expected and permitted to have frontage and/or access to I-49. And this one is for a current restaurant that I believe already has been inspected and is, is operating. And where upon the final inspection, we realized it was not the, the right zoning for a drive-through. So we're just tying up blue sentence and doing that. So thank you, Clint.
Any public comments? There's no other comments. This will be call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Thank you. That rezon request passes 9-0. Thank you.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on June 24th.
Next up is R25-33, Springdale School District. Request rezon from C2 to P1, presented by Jeremy White.
Hello, I'm Jeremy White with Springdale Public Schools. We're looking to rezone some property we purchased. It was 104 South Thompson from a C2 to a P1. This will help align the zoning for our proposed use of that property.
Thank you. Staff comments?
This rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan and is recommended for approval. Locate middle schools, junior high schools, and high schools on major collectors and/or arterial streets to improve access and limit adverse impacts of the higher intensity use on residential neighborhoods. And community facilities such as schools should be centrally located in easily accessible areas within the city adjacent to major streets to accommodate traffic well buffered from nearby residential areas and on adequate-sized parcels to accommodate future expansion.
Any public comments? None from commissioners. This will be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Thank you. That passes 9-0. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the 24th.
Next up is R25-35. We have a slew of things with this one. This is a rezon request from A1 to C5. And we also have a large-scale review. And then, we also, within that large-scale review, have two variance for commercial design standards for both landscape and also parking orientation, presented by ESI.
Hey, Nick Bonning on behalf of ESI. If you have any questions about anything, just let me know.
Regarding staff comments?
For the rezoning, this rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the Comprehensive Land Use Plan and is recommended for approval. You're going from A1 to C5. Those goals: Improve the city's economic base and tax structure through the promotion of healthy, stable commercial concentrations. Assure adequate land allocation for commercial areas of sufficient size and proper locations. And encourage the development of regional commercial areas that accommodate a variety of wholesale, retail, service, and office uses where the highest traffic volumes and the greatest utility demands can be served. And more extensive outdoor display of materials will be expected and permitted to have frontage and/or access to I-49.
Any further comments? We'll do, we'll do the rezon first and we'll come back for large-scale. I could tell by the way you were looking at me, what you wanted. So this will be call for the vote. Before we do that, any public comments about this rezon request? Not just a call for the vote?
Call for the vote.
Thank you. That passes 9-0. Do we have any staff comments regarding the R scale?
Mine are really simple. Just submit the structural plans for the retaining wall before construction.
We will.
In addition to the standard planning comments, the developer must dedicate the right-of-way for 48th Street, a collector's street with a 65-foot right-of-way. A separate dedication document should be submitted for filing. Please add a label for South 48th Street on the plan set and ensure the correct right-of-way dedication is provided. Over 60% of the parking in between the right-of-way and the building facade is situated there on this proposal. So a variance has been requested to allow for this layout. For the outdoor seating west of Building 2, only the concrete pad, fence, and landscaping are permitted. No permanent structures can be placed in this area within the utility easement. There is no pedestrian walkway north of the diagonal parking spaces or on the east side of Building 1. Without a sidewalk, one-way traffic wrapping around Building 1 could potentially pose a safety risk for employees. Does the curb east of Building 2 connect pedestrians to Building 1? Is it at grade? If not, please add a ramp and truncated dome for accessibility. And then, the trash containers on the south side of the lot, it's just missing some screening. It just needs some landscaping on that south side.
Yeah, we're reducing some of the, like, the width of the street to make it all accommodate and make it all fit to reach those last comments. And then, that crossing was at grade. A detector plate has been added to it.
Can you speak to where the landscaping, your variance request for that?
Oh, yes. So for the landscaping, we are unsure depending on how the wall is built on the east side of the property, if trees will be able to live there or not. We're going to try to keep the trees alive over there, but in lieu of them not being able to survive, we were going to request a variance and not have them on the perimeter over there. And then, for the foundation landscaping, the east side of Building 2, I believe, which I had the small building listed as, we have parking, a budding, the patio areas. We're going to put some planters out there to try to suffice for that.
Thank you for that. Any public comments? Commissioners, any comments, questions?
Yeah, I'd like to speak to the choice of parking lot lighting. You are currently specifying a street lighting fixture at a 5,000 K level, which we would prefer to see something a little bit warmer. And also, for the type of space, like, street lighting would not, you'd want to use actual parking lot-type site lighting fixture.
Yes, we can look into the exact light we use and we can try to get something more conforming to that.
I've noticed this commonly on a number of projects that y'all do. So whoever's doing that design?
I'll pass along to him.
I think you made mention of it, but when I look at your plan, I'm assuming the, the concrete on both sides of the number-two building is for future patio seating. Is that the intent for those?
That's the intent right now. Yes, sir.
Any other comments? If none, do we want to take these variances, both landscaping and parking orientation, as one? Uh, this will be call for the vote on the variance.
Call for the vote.
That passes 9-0. Now, large-scale, this will be a motion subject to staff comments.
Motion subject to staff comments.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. That passes 9-0 as well. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Next up is large-scale developments. We're looking at L25-14, Vienna Heights Apartments. There is one variance request for reduction in parking spaces and parking requirements, presented by Blue &amp; Associates.
George Skane, Blue &amp; Associates. We are doing an 80-unit apartment complex. I believe we are asking for variances to use the garages as parking. And we're asking for a reduction in parking as well. As you might be able to see, the garages are in those areas. Well, you can kind of see the doors. There you go. So we've tried to meet all the multifamily residential standards. We've provided some pickleball courts in the back, a fire pit. And we've done some of the stepping in the buildings to kind of meet those residential design codes. And, you know, provide the garages. They'll have a central hallway. And, yeah, if you guys have any questions, I am here for you.
Thank you for that. Any staff comments?
So we talked about that minimum pipe slope already. We just need to confirm that those pipes are going to get to 2 foot per second when it's flowing full. And then, we will need to work with the neighbor to the north to install culverts under their driveway. And then, we'll just need that geotechnical report for County Line Road to recommend cross-sections.
In addition to the standard planning comments, provide a plan that ensures a minimum illumination level of 1 foot candle in all pedestrian areas. The common open space should incorporate at least three of the elements outlined in Item C5 of the multifamily development standards, or design standards, rather. The proposal is close to meeting the requirements for the open spaces provided, but I think just a couple of things might be missing, and I think it's quick fixes. The private outdoor spaces such as balconies and patios designated for individual units can't be counted towards the common open space. And this is stipulated within the multifamily design standards, so we might just take a look at some of those counts. Either way, you guys had plenty of open space. Can you confirm that the portions of the buildings angled closest to the eastern and western property lines are two stories?
That was the intent, yes.
Okay. And so they comply with the setback regulations of 10 feet per story?
Any public comments? Commissioners?
I had a question on the parking that you said was garage-focused. Is it in the garage or is it outside? And if it's outside, are you going to stripe it just so it, people don't park wherever they want to park?
Site plan up.
A site plan? Yeah, there we go.
So you can see there, that's actually perfect. We've actually striped the area in front of the garages. And the garage spaces will actually have access from the hallways to have individual parking. So, I mean, in this particular case, you can have one tenant actually use a space just outside of the garage and the space inside of the garage for parking.
I had a question. What's the, what's the material on the, on the decks or the patios? The railing?
I'm not prepared to answer that question.
It's okay, just curious.
Maybe staff will know that's usually put on the elevations themselves. I know there was a chart with all that stuff on the architectural elevations. I don't know if that's included in one of their slides.
On the plan view, is that a breezeway? Is that what you have in the center of the apartments of those breezeways?
That's what, the word I was looking for. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. That's what I'm here for. Can you elaborate on your reduction parking spaces? How many less than what we?
So we're reducing it, um, so the garage spaces, we've taken into account. And that's one of the things is we want to be able to use garage spaces. I believe in your code. It doesn't currently allow for that. But including the garage spaces, we're 10, about 10 spaces short of what we need. Not including the striped areas in front of the garage. We did not include those as parking spaces either.
What is your ratio per bedroom? Per unit, sorry.
We're, yeah, we're doing the, the three for, yeah.
It's like three for the first 20, 2.25 for the next 50. There, there, there's a calculation involved with it.
What are the bedrooms count? Do you know? You may not know. Are they two, three, or one-twos, or? Sorry, I know you're just the civil guy. I'm asking all these architectural stuff.
I mean, I think, what do we have to do? There's a building information table, Jackie, on the site plan. Maybe you guys can take a look at it. It breaks down how many three-bedroom, two-bedroom. My eyesight is such that this small print, I can't read anymore.
I'm with you on that one.
Yeah.
Do you know, will the buildings look more like this rendering or your other renderings? Do you, do you know?
This is, so I, I do believe this is older.
So the darker brick and a little bit more glazing. So this is more what it looks like?
I mean, it's going to look like this, but, you know, obviously, this is not photorealistic, so.
100%.
Yeah.
And you were curious about the unit breakdown?
Yeah, well, the number of bedrooms.
Oh, yeah, there you go. Yeah.
So it looks like we have, uh, both buildings are basically configured the same. So we'll have 10 two-bedroom units and 10 three-bedroom units in each building.
Thank you for that. Any further questions?
So just so I'm clear, the reduction is, you want to reduce them by 10. Is that exclusive of the, the garages or is it including the garages? So after we include the garages?
After we include the garages, we're still short by 10.
But you're not including the spaces outside the garage?
I am not including the spaces outside of the garages.
Which probably gets to the other 10, or actually more if we included that.
Creates some complexity, I guess, though, if you're striped and somebody that doesn't own the garage parks in front of it.
I would think that whoever gets the garage gets their unit number painted on the ground, but.
Comes down to property. What is the open space to the south? It's like a keyhole kind of thing. What is, what is that?
That's the fire pit area.
Very good.
So there's like a little picnic area, which is a square, and then that little circle is the? The fire pit area.
And the building to the north, is that just a clubhouse-type thing or what is that?
Office slash leasing space. And then, they're going to also kind of keep their equipment in there so that for mowing and stuff like that.
Sure.
Yeah. Yeah. You got a nice little picture there of it.
If we want to look at the variance, that'll be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Thank you. That passes 9-0. Large-scale will be a motion subject to staff comments.
Motion subject to staff comments.
Second.
Thank you. That passes 9-0 as well. Thank you. Next up is public hearing form-based code. This is Onyx Coffee Lab, FP25-06, presented by Andrea Allen. Hello.
Hi. First-time caller, so have some grace. I'm Andrea. I'm the co-founder of Onyx Coffee Lab, and we're bringing an application for deviation for cafe frontage encroachment in the form of cafe-style seating.
Staff comments?
Yeah, I'll provide a little context for this. So our first edition of the form-based code allowed for a certain amount of encroachment into a public right-of-way, so cafe frontage on a sidewalk. But our updated 2023 form-based code does not allow for that encroachment on the public right-of-way for, for businesses downtown. So they have to seek a deviation and come through and get approval by planning commission. So this, if you go back to the site plan, Ginny, there are three kind of areas in this site plan that we are looking at. So the blue, so just north of that is, is Emma Avenue sidewalk. And it looks like you have some, some tables and chairs out there. And then, there's another area that's actually by Turnbo Park that runs along adjacent to the greenway. And then, there's a small gray area that's actually the entryway outside the entry of that, of that actual building. And so I just want to, just quickly, because all three of these areas are different and unique in their own ways. So I just want to touch on them. So the sidewalk on Emma, so staff recommends that tables and chairs only be on that north side of Emma, so adjacent to the building itself and not on both sides of Emma, just to ensure that unobstructed path for people to go through. And then, the, the yellow triangle area, that's actually by Turnbo Park. So we just, we do not want any encroachment into the greenway. And I know you guys are aware of that. And right now, the way they're placed are okay. They don't encroach, but we don't want any encroachment in that greenway. And then, the gray area that represents the entry to that building, I think we might have a picture of that with the bench. Do we have a picture in the? There's one more, that one right here. So the benches and the mailbox is, is fine, but I, I think staff do have concerns about the tables, just if chairs were there. I don't think we have a problem with the tables, but if somebody is sitting at the chair across from that bench, then you would have an obstructed pathway that people couldn't get through. So for this entryway, the configuration, you know, is, is how you guys want it. But we wouldn't support the chairs, maybe not the tables, because we just have to ensure we have that, that pathway there. Yes, ma'am. And then I just want to be able to state that the city and the downtown Springdale Alliance retain the discretion to be able to ask for these to be moved if there's an event or at-will for any reason, and we will work with business owners and give proper notification. But we just want to make sure that, that that is clearly understood between the city and applicant.
Yes, absolutely. We'll be happy to move them for any event or whatever is needed.
Any public comments? Commissioners?
Are we, would we be voting on these separate or together? Because that one that I'm seeing there and the kind of the triangle from the greenway, looks like it makes sense, and... But looks, it looks, looks very good for the business. The up-front, I struggle with because people can congregate around that, and then it makes it tough to get through. In the building, I was kind of indifferent with kind of the entryway, but that one totally makes sense, the yellow shaded area. I struggle with the up-front. So are we doing these separate or together?
That can be up to this body.
Is this what you're calling up-front, Brent?
All I'll say is I get the problem with the front, but like, the taco place and the onsole right there both come out arguably, probably further than that. So it's already like a thing. There's plenty of space there for it.
I think there was some context to, to explain what that was. Not that that's ideal, but I think it was timing and, is that what you told us?
It, it was. It was permitted under the first edition of the Form-Based Code to allow for that encroachment. Now, the details of the approval of those in specific sites, I don't have that information on hand as to how those decisions were made, since we're talking about this one. And there were actually more tables out front on Emma previously that, that were causing problems. They've moved them all up against the building, and it does work a lot better at the pickup window now. So I would say if we have any tables out there, they just need to, you know, always be up against the wall, and if people move them around, they just need to be diligent about keeping them out of the pathway.
Any further comments?
I'm good to vote altogether. I mean, I'm, I support all of it. I think it's great. I love coming down in the street and seeing people out doing things, so.
I'll concur and agree with the idea that as long as the ownership has diligence with their staff to keep things safe and keep those pathways clear, that I'd be most comfortable with that.
And we do. We were provided agreement between the property owners and the tenant to make sure, the tenant, to make sure that all those, all those details were taken care of.
There's no more other comments. This'll be call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Thank you. That passes seven-one-one with one abstain.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Board Adjustment. First one up for discussion is B25-34 by Myrna Calderon Rivera. This is a variance for reduction of side setback from eight foot to five, presented by Myrna. Hello.
Hi. Well, supposedly, we are here because they want us to remove the, the deck and a porch, but the, the porch, it was built by, by her, but the, the deck, it was already in the house when they purchased it. So the deck is original.
Any staff comments?
So for this one, it looks like there was a previous unpermitted structure, and I, I may look to Building and Fire, because I think they may have a little more insight on this situation.
Yeah, so I went up there today and looked at it. Steve Goss, Springdale Fire Marshal. I went up there today and looked at, it looked like it's about two feet from the fence property line. Is that correct? Did you measure it?
The porch or the, or the deck?
Well, it looked like the, looked like the sidewall and the roof were probably around two feet. I didn't, I didn't go on your property and measure it, because I don't want, I don't think it'd be appropriate, but just from what I could tell.
I think it's about three feet away from the, from the fence.
How far?
Three, three feet. Yeah.
And now, can I, do you plan to enclose it or keep it open?
Well, the plan was try, keep it like, with some kind of mesh, so that, that way there can go flowing.
So, so the, being within five feet with the amount of open that was there, what I saw, it looked like it was over 25% open, and it looked like it was partially constructed. It was unfinished. So as of right now, it's against the fire code. Forget about the city and the planning and setbacks and all that. It's, it's against the fire code. So we typically do not support anything within eight feet of those in that situation. So what we would ask is that it be moved to at least five feet and have no more than 25% opening with non-combustible exterior cladding like hardy board or brick. So if you want to go back to five feet, no more than 25% open, and have non-combustible cladding. If you want it, whatever you want to do, if you want to go and do it however you want to, our recommendation would be to move it back to eight feet, which would probably not give you much of a porch, but... And I'm happy to go over this with you.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ed.
Unfortunately, this is built without a building permit. And so what we dealt, what I went out and I looked at it also, and, and on top of what the fire marshal had to say, we've got a couple of issues. One, I can't tell, but what are you using for a beam there? It looks like it was a four-by-four post.
Yes.
You can't use a post as a four-by-four, as a beam. So that's going to have to be reframed anyway. Also, your, your roof pitch is 212, it appears to be, and you can't have shingles on a 212 pitch unless you use something like ice and water shield. I don't know what you put under it, so that would be... Usually when we see a 212 pitch, we see a metal roof. And finally, you're attached to the fascia, and when you attach a, when you attach a rafter to a fascia, you create a hinge there, and it's not properly bearing. It needs to bear on the wall, not on the fascia itself. And so you really need to push it up a little bit higher anyway to get up onto the roof and actually bear on the wall. Those are the things I just saw just by looking at it once you get a permit. So, I mean, it looks like you're probably going to have to take it down and rebuild it the way you do, no matter what variance is granted to you.
So, quiere usted de que quitarlo, todo, o dejarlo nomás como de cinco pies?
Quitar todo el techo?
Sí.
No, porque según yo lo hice, por este problema, ¿verdad?
Pero es que está él aquí, está mal conectado a la casa.
Que quede de cinco, si no hay problema, que quede de cinco.
Pero tiene que volverlo a quitar y volverlo a hacer para conectarlo aquí a la casa. Yo para mí mejor lo quitaron.
Do you want us to vote on this, or you want to pull your variance request and meet with staff?
She's willing to remove the, the porch, because it's going to be a lot of issues anyway.
Sure.
And so right now, she's just willing to remove the porch.
So if, if you wish, you can withdraw your application. And then if you decide that you want to try and rebuild something on the side, I just encourage you to meet with the Building Department or, or Planning, and we can try our best to help guide you if, if you want to rebuild something.
Okay. Tiene que, tiene que quitarlo todo. Sí, porque no está bien. Dice él que no está bien. No, no, no está bien.
Es que lo máximo que puede estar es cinco pies de la, de la cerca.
Sí, pero cuando yo agarré la casa, estaba eso. Entonces, no, no, el, el, el deck, esto, estaba ya.
El deck, lo debajo, ¿verdad?
El deck ya estaba. Nomás yo le puse el, el techo.
Sí, y es lo que...
Porque esto tiene la salida de, de mi casa, está aquí. Entonces, no hay escaleras, no hay gradas, no hay nada para salir hacia afuera. Estaba esto de una vez.
Yeah, she, she stayed in the, the deck. The deck was there when she purchased the home. She was, she was trying to do the best she could to have a, a roof over that, that entrance. Pero como dice, es contra la, el código de incendios, y es con la, de la ambulancia. No la ven saber los bomberos. No podemos hacer nada más. Disculpe.
Okay, now.
No, no, lo voy a quitar, lo voy a dejar en el bien.
All right, so she's going to remove it for right now, and then she's going to get with them and trying to get it the right way, five feet.
Perfect. Thank you. Sorry for the inconvenience.
Yeah, if you'll come into our office and ask for me or Tom, I'm Ed, ask for Ed or Tom, we'll help you design whatever you need to design.
Okay.
And, and we've got several people who speak Spanish too, so they're very good. They're very skilled in construction techniques.
Thank you.
We're good, thank you.
Appreciate it. Next up is B25-35, Randy and Deborah Perry. This is a variance for reduction of side setback from eight foot to four foot, presented by Jeff Withrow. Yes, sir.
What we want to do is...
Can you state your name and?
Sorry?
Can you state your name?
Oh, Jeff Withrow. And this is Randy Perry.
I'm Randy Perry. I'm the owner of the property.
What we want to do is create another garage on the east side of the building here and build it to code. Use the similar siding that's already on there, paint it. The structure should look very similar to the existing home and all that.
An enclosed garage or an open carport?
Enclosed garage with a garage door.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Perry and Mr. Withrow, Steve Goss, Springdale Fire Marshal, you heard what I just discussed with them. So anything falling within eight feet is against their rules of the planning and requires a variance. Fire Department doesn't support a variance within eight feet. You're four feet, correct?
I'm sorry, I'm...
Yeah, we're at four feet.
Okay, so... No, that's okay. Hey, I'm, I'm not very good myself, so you're within four feet, so we would not support anything within eight feet. And when we do drop within eight feet for a variance, we typically, we require whatever's required for the state law, which is five feet. Okay? So you're within five feet. That would require, anything less than that would require one-hour barrier. Okay? Or there, there's different ways you can do that. You basically either have to have it where it's completely unopen, one-hour barrier, all of those things, which if you're going to enclose it anyway, that may not be that big of a problem for you.
It shouldn't be with the outside siding. With, with, with their OSB, that'll give you the one-hour rating.
I'm going to let Ed speak to the rating on it. Yeah.
There, there, there is, there is a listing for hardy siding that involves, but it doesn't involve OSB. It, it actually has, has a piece of dense glass or five-eighths inch exterior jip on it, but for your, for your sheeting. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Well, you want to use exterior on the outside and, and five-eighths interiors, of course. But yeah, other than that, and then you're, we, we want you to keep your number of openings down below 25%, so one window's fine, but seven isn't. Yeah.
Yeah, just one window, so we had.
That'd probably be perfect.
Took you adjust your plan to be five foot setback and still four?
A little bit of tightness into that spacing, because this is a pretty close space and, and, you know.
Do this with four feet if he builds the wall the way I explained it to him.
With the fire retardant?
With the fire, with the, fire rating, yeah. He could build it right on the property line with the fire rating, but that's another whole thing for you guys.
Don't say that. What are you doing?
Gosh.
I've drawn drawings for, for state for years, so I can, we, we adjust to that. If we need to make that bump up a little bit more, I thought, but I understand.
Just speak with, just speak with Ed, Tom, or whoever, if you go to get a permit, and make sure that wherever you're, throughout the year.
Yeah, George, your last name? Okay, Ed, I know you from you. I just had, I thought you retired already. I'm sorry. I had to recognize you with the white hair. It's been a few years. And, and of course, mine's white too, so that's probably the reason why.
Yes, sir.
Steve?
I think I'm maybe too far away too, though. So it has to do with, with, they have their own setbacks. And so, anyway, there, there's a way to do it. Just talk with Ed.
I appreciate that very much. All right.
So although, this is a call for the vote, if we want to look at this variance.
That was just an aesthetic problem.
Correct. Any other comments? Any public comments outside of the ones that have been made so far?
You said this was another garage. Does that mean there's already a garage at this property?
There's an existing garage, but it's not, it's, it was an older home, but it's not quite adequate enough.
Because this house was built in early, so already situated, so a two-car garage is about a garage and, and a half at best.
Will you be widening that driveway, or is the driveway already what?
No, there's already...
It's already there. There's already, the, the pads even already, you can see the picture, it's already concrete pad. Been there.
Yeah.
I guess I've been there 25 years, and I guess is there many years before me, you know, the pad underneath it was already there, so.
It's a call for the vote?
Call for the vote.
Thank you. That passes six to two with one abstain. Thank you.
Okay. All right, Ed, very much. Thank you very much.
Next up is B25-37. This is UAMS Orthopedic and Sports Medicine Center. They're asking for a variance for reduction of front setback from 30 foot to 25. They're also asking for a waiver of street improvements of Mary Frances Lane. This is presented by Marlin Blackwell Architects.
I'm Gus Luterman with Waltrip Moore. We're the civil engineer. And then with me is Ted Vong with Waltrip Moore, the engineer record.
Engineering companion, UAMS.
Seth Bradlin, Marlin Blackwell Architects.
It's the whole team up here.
So I can give you guys a little bit of context on this one. We saw the large scale come through just a month or two ago, and the only engineering comment left over from that approval was to address the new master street plan. Between the time that we first saw this project, and then when they resubmitted, the master street plan changed, and Mary Frances Lane went from a minor collector to a commercial street. So we were looking for a way to compromise and still kind of get the street section that they thought would work best for their facility while still accommodating the future commercial section. So basically, what we have left now is there, the commercial section has bike lanes and side paths. They're asking for a waiver of those bike lanes and a waiver to not stripe the parking lane. So what, what we'd like to do is, at this point, we'll stripe that street like a collector, two lanes and a, and a turn lane, until we have more development in that area that warrants the pedestrian and bicycle connectivity. They previously were granted a waiver to do no sidewalk on the west side of Mary Frances. So the small bit of sidewalk on the east side, they have offered to increase to eight foot and setback appropriately, so that it won't have to be moved in the future.
And that, that street section with the center turn lane works well with the dock. We have large vehicles coming in and out of the medical facility, central utility plant, so.
So does this image represent what we're talking about here, Katie? Is the orange this sidewalk that they're going to do? What can you?
Yes, that's correct. So the orange is the eight-foot sidewalk that they will build. And then the, the other request I forgot to mention is, is they wanted to remove that loop at the end. The street used to loop back into the parking lot. It's not an issue with access at all, so they're just going to cut it off currently. And then, yeah, the striping, as it's shown here, would be how it would be striped at first.
Just to reference that street, the fire lane and access is through the parking lot. The street extension is less than 150 feet, and so there shouldn't be any issue with, with maneuverability of your fire truck. We've looked at auto turns for the dock coming in and out, and trying to maintain, again, the, the larger trucks, sorry, larger trucks within the same lane instead of trying to take up the entire street to make that maneuver.
Thank you. Can you speak to the setback request from 30 to 25?
Oh, and that was because the new commercial street section is 10-foot wider than the old minor collector that we don't have anymore. So I asked them to dedicate additional five-foot of right-of-way on either side, which caused a setback encroachment on the utility building. So we asked them to apply for a variance to let that building encroach five feet. So we asked them to apply for a variance to let that building encroach five feet.
Thank you. Any public comments? Any further staff comments? Commissioners? If none, we can, let's do the call for the vote on the reduction of the front setback from thirty to twenty-five.
Call for the vote.
Thank you. That passes nine zero. Next is the waiver of street improvements as explained by staff. This will be a motion forward to city council to approve or deny this waiver request.
Motion, a request for approval, city council.
Motion and a second, thank you. This, again, is a motion to approve the waiver request. That passes nine zero as well. Thank you.
Staff will prepare the resolution for the waiver that goes to council on the twenty-fourth.
Next up is B twenty-five dash thirty-eight Barrett and Theodore Zamina. This is a variance for reduction of rear setback from twenty foot to eight foot, presented by Barrett.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Yeah, so we needed a shed built, and we built a pretty big one. But the current setback is twenty feet from the back fence, and it makes us lose a lot of our yard because the shed is twenty foot long as well. My wife really wants her yard back, so I proposed either eight or ten feet from the back fence. I'll take whatever I can get at this point, but that's about it. We have opportunities with, like, we have a trampoline for the kids. We wanna put up a swimming pool temporarily, you know, and we don't really have that much yard space to work with. So the extra twelve foot in the front would really help.
What is the structure that we're seeing here that's square-looking?
That is a gazebo, and it has been there for a while. So I was told that if I moved it, it would also have to meet the twenty-foot setback. And it's just a metal gazebo, and there's no tarp over it right now. It's just a metal structure.
Got you. So is this, are you saying this shed, this ten by twenty, is currently in your yard? You just wanna move it?
It's currently in my yard. I will have to move it, and that's gonna be a pain all on its own.
Sure. Any staff comments? Any public comments? I don't know. We're going back to Ed.
Where is the, sorry, where is the shed? How far off of the property line or from the easement, the rear setback, is it right now currently?
Over, it's twenty-one feet from the back fence.
It's twenty-one feet from the back fence?
And the fence is one foot before the property line, so...
Okay. And how far is it from your side, your side, eight foot from the side?
I would like to make it eight foot from the back, ten foot if you won't approve eight.
Commissioners, any questions? If none, this will be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote on the eight foot?
Thank you. That passes nine zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go luck with the trampoline and the pool and all the other things that go into that backyard.
I appreciate it. Thank you, everybody.
Next up is B twenty-five dash forty Deer Creek Phase Two. This is a variance for increased fence height from three foot to eight foot, presented by Seth Johnson.
Good evening. My name is Seth Johnson. I work with Shur Mitchell Homes, and I'm here speaking on behalf of our homeowners in Phase Two of our Deer Creek subdivision. So we have this eight-foot fence that was installed along the back property line, along Forty-Eighth Street. It goes along three lots, and we built this, another department built this in July of 2024 to act as a noise barrier, but more so a sight buffer with Forty-Eighth Street in their backyard as well as the interstate two hundred feet away.
And then if I can just add a note, so this picture right here, if you'll study here, Jenny, this first lot on reindeer, so this is the lot that needs a variance from three to six because this one lot, that is considered a front. So it's actually, that request is three to six. And then if you go back to the previous slide where we saw the rear fences of these along Forty-Eighth, so we platted those as rears. So those three lots that we have identified actually need a rear, a variance from six foot to eight. So it's a little confusing. Those three back fences, six to eight. That side lot is actually three to six. Is that right?
I wasn't aware of the side yard along reindeer being...
We actually have that platted as a front. Even if you look on that final plat, that was what we went by to give those requirements.
Okay. We bought this development as finished lots. So we're trying to do our homeowners a favor by keeping them in mind, but I wasn't aware of that.
And it'll be a similar situation if you guys develop and help the lots that are on that north side of that reindeer, just as FYI for the future.
Okay.
Any public comments on this request? Commissioners?
So from this picture and looking at the map, it looks like there's not sightline issues. Did we, Katie, were we able to go check on any sightline issues with this one with the fence?
Yeah, we didn't see any sightline issues.
On this picture, the fence to the further north, is that eight foot as well or no?
So it actually ties into the neighbors, to, that would be the south to their fence. But just that section that darts off there, that is eight foot as well. And that's on the, one of the three lots.
That's on the north side of reindeer, is what you're saying?
Sorry, are you talking about on the left side of this picture?
Can you pull up the map, Jenny, even the aerial? Yeah, so is it that black delineated line, is it north of those? That black delineated line that goes east and west, that is, that's reindeer. Basically where that road is.
Correct.
So there are higher fences on that north side?
No, ma'am.
Oh.
Yeah, I guess my question was, is it gonna be eight foot all the way along Forty-Eighth Streets or just this section of these three houses? It looks like the fence in the background is shorter. Of course, that's depth perception. I'm just curious.
It's just these lots on Forty-Eighth.
Any other questions, comments? If not, this will be a call for the vote for both variances. The back variance from six to eight, the front variance, which is really a side, from three to six.
Call for the vote.
Thank you. That passes nine zero. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Next up are the waivers. First one will be W twenty-five dash sixteen. This is a waiver of street improvement sidewalk on Kelly Road, presented by Felipe Truilo.
Hello, I'm Darren Trujillo. I'll be speaking for Felipe Trujillo.
What's your request, sir?
It's, uh, we, it's for a sidewalk. I don't think we need one where we're building the house. There isn't any that it would connect to or... Uh, yeah. Yeah, we feel like we don't need it.
Understood. Thank you. Any staff comments?
Y'all remember, this is right where the six-twelve bypass is cutting Kelly in half, so they will be at a dead-end road.
And they had a waiver request just recently approved for the adjacent property owner.
At some point to the bottom of that picture, is there a development?
Where at, Brent, sorry? There is a subdivision being developed over there at Kelly and Marchant.
Right across the street from it, or is it?
It's to the south and to the east a little bit. I'm not sure if it's even on that, that image or not.
Where Kelly hits Marchant, is that where it is?
Correct.
This house that you're building, is it on the front part of the property or the back? Because it looks like there's multiple structures, and there's kind of like a driveway that goes back. Sir? Property that you're developing, the lot, or is it on the back of the lot? Because when I look at it, there's like a driveway that goes back, and there's multiple structures, it looks like?
It's in the front.
If there are no further comments, this will be a motion forward to city council to approve or deny this waiver request.
I move that we forward to city council to approve this waiver request.
I need a second.
Second.
So the motion is to forward to city council to approve this waiver request. That passes nine zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is W twenty-five dash seventeen.
Let me add, um...
Sorry.
Sorry. Staff is gonna prepare a resolution that's gonna go to city council on June twenty-fourth at 6:00 PM. You're encouraged to be there, but you're not required to be there. But we just wanna make you aware of that, okay? So city council will have the final vote, so it has to go through one more, one more body, okay?
Next up is W twenty-five dash seventeen Loretta and William Tanner. This is a waiver of street improvement sidewalk on Shoreline Drive, presented by Loretta and William Tanner. I will also note that we did receive an email with a signed document stating they support this waiver request. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, sir. I'm William Tanner, and we request that we don't have to put a sidewalk in.
Fair enough. Any comments? Any public comments? Staff comments? Commissioners, any questions? If not, this will be a motion forward to city council to approve or deny this waiver.
Motion forward to city council to approve the waiver.
I need a second. Thank you. That passes nine zero.
Thank you, sir.
Staff is gonna prepare a resolution that's gonna go to city council on June twenty-fourth. You're encouraged to attend, but you're not required to, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
How does the refund work? We had to put up a bond.
Oh, did you do a bond? Okay. Once city council actually has a vote, we'll have to see what the outcome of their vote will be, and then your bond will get returned to you after they vote. So after, so June twenty-fourth, so you may want to attend. I highly encourage you to attend since you have a bond put up.
June twenty-fourth.
Mm-hmm.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next is W twenty-five dash nineteen Daniel and Heather Douglas. Also a waiver of street improvement sidewalk on Nicholas Road, presented by Daniel and Heather Douglas. Or at least Heather.
Hello, I'm Heather Douglas, so requesting to not add sidewalks to a house that we're building. It's down a very rural road with trees lined. There's currently no sidewalks on either side of the road, and it's a dead-end street.
Any staff comments? Any public comments? Commissioners? If none, this is a motion to forward to city council to approve or deny this waiver request.
Motion to forward to council for approval.
I need to have a second.
Second.
Thank you. That passes nine zero.
Thank you. So staff is also gonna prepare a resolution that goes to council on the twenty-fourth. And then I also just wanna say, Ms. Douglas, I'm impressed that you got this far. I know you worked hard with Arkansas Gaming Fish and with our office with two years, so I'm happy you got this far.
Yes, thank you very much.
Congrats on that. Next up is W twenty-five dash twenty-two Rebecca Neal Thompson Revocable Trust. This is a waiver, a request for a waiver of street improvements on East Waggonwell Road, presented by Rebecca Neal Thompson.
Hi, I'm Troy Thompson. I'm Becky's husband, and we're wanting a waiver on a sidewalk, and if there's any questions, I could answer.
Thank you. Any public comments? Staff comments? Commissioners? If not, you know the drill.
I move that we forward to city council to approve this request.
Can you get a second?
Second.
That passes nine zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Becky, I know you know the drill with city council, and we're gonna take this resolution also to council on the twenty-fourth, okay?
Thank you.
Next up is W twenty-five dash twenty-three Reliable Poultry Expansion. This is a waiver of street improvements on East Humphill Avenue, presented by Earth Plan Design Alternatives. You picked a good night for this one.
James Gertz with EDA here to answer any questions on this one.
Any public comments on this request? Staff?
I will mention, I know you guys have seen probably a couple waivers for reliable poultry in the recent times. We had one not too long ago.
Two, three weeks ago, or two months ago.
Yeah, I just wanna clarify that that was for the parcel to the north where they had a gravel request. And so this one is an expansion that they're doing on the lower one, which is why they're back in front of you.
Commissioners, if no comments, this will be a motion forward to city council to approve or deny this request.
I did have a quick question. Did I say that they were donating a right-of-way in this as well?
Uh, yes, if they have, you've put forth a development plan. It's a requirement of it, so yeah.
We'll be donating right of-way. Motion for approval by city council.
Yeah, a second?
Second.
That passes nine zero. Thank you.
We'll hear the resolution on the twenty-fourth.
Next up is L twenty-four dash twenty-five. This is a request for extension for Stunted Guard Food of Arkansas, presented by Earth Plan Design Alternatives, the guy standing right in front of us.
James Gertz with EDA. They're asking for this extension because they had some difficult times last year with bird flu and egg prices. And so now they just wanna keep this option open for constructing this large scale.
Any public comments for this request? Staff? Commissioners? If none, this will be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Thank you. That passes nine zero.
Thank you.
Next up, I'll turn it over to the planning director for item B. Then she could do her report. And to note, this is only six oh seven, just FYI.
Okay, so tonight, we're gonna hear the proposed revisions to Chapter one thirty, the zoning ordinance of our Code of Ordinances to the city of Springdale. Article four, the district regulations, section three, commercial districts, for the inclusion of C seven recreational vehicle park district. And we're also gonna replace Article six, section three point one three, for the corresponding supplementary district regulations. And we included some information in your packet, a draft of the ordinance and the actual supplementary regulations that we feel is appropriate for this zoning. It's been vetted by the city attorney. He had a couple edits just on the ordinance section, but none on the actual district or the design standards. They are the same that we saw at the work session recently and very similar to previous iterations of this. So now is the time for any conversation. But as a recap, we first heard this, and we had a rezoning application that came to us in December for a mobile home park. It got denied, they appealed, and they were seeking for an RV park because right now it's only a permitted use in a mobile home park or a manufactured home park, excuse me. So creating the C seven would allow a zoning district that is just specific to these RV parks. And so that we know that the district and the standards that come with it. There's one other use unit other than city use by right, number one. But I think we have a conditional use for use unit four. That's because use unit four includes campgrounds and camping. And so that might be appropriate for some situations, and they would have to come before this body with a conditional use request. But we are on track, so we first, I can't believe we've been working on it since the beginning of the year. But it was January when we first took it to council committee. We went through in February, back to city council, asked you guys about it in March, asked for some feedback, and here we are. So we're gonna ask for this to have a vote tonight. So we're going to ask for this to have a vote tonight, and then if it has your stamp of approval, then we'll move forward with this.
Any public comment on this rezone or this revision or actually, I guess, a new zone?
Zoning more than some of that, yeah.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions or comments? If none, this will be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Thank you. That passes nine zero. I want to thank planning staff for taking all the time, six months of work to get a new ordinance put together for RV parts which were greatly needed since the last one we had was 30 years old.
That is correct. And so this will tentatively go, sorry, to council committee on the 16th. And then if they are comfortable with it, we'll move it forward to city council on June 24th. And after that, I guess we'll see the outcome after that, and I'll circle back and update you with their feedback.
Do you have a director's report?
I do. All right, so city council made 13th and the 27th. We had 14 items approved in total. Everything that we presented to them was approved. Second, we have an appeal coming up the next council meeting on the 10th, and that was for the Herc Rentals for their two variances. They had one for gravel and one for the fence materials where they wanted the chain link over on the southwest corner of Waggonwell and 45th. So they will be appealing the two variances. So we will update you with the outcome of that after the 10th. Next week, Jackie and a city councilman, Mr. Huntley, are going to Rhode Island for the CNU. The following week, a couple staff members are attending a municipal league conference. And then as a small development conformance update, so the Ramsey, the apartments that are over there by Bob Mills, their first building got a C of O. The Crossings, which is the commercial center just west of Chick-fil-A, that got a C of O. Gray's Landing, which is that commercial development right next to Dairy Queen, I hate to describe it like that, is the landmark I'm thinking of. That one got C of O. Bridger's Crossing, which is a residential development at 265 and Electric Avenue. And Star Mechanical also got C of O. Been ready to go. Since we're about halfway through the year and we wrapped up this meeting pretty early, I wanted to give you a quick, at a glance, halfway through the year. So just to see, it looks like we're pretty on track with past years, but just a project update of how many we've had. So this year, we've had 36 rezones, five conditional use applications, 43 variance applications, six downtown deviations, so form-based code variances, 19 large-scale developments, 18 non-large-scale developments, so those that are approved on the staff level in-house, 11 subdivision preliminary plats, six final plat, seven replats, and about 30 lot splits that we have processed so far this year. And my last update is that we have a couple staff reorganization within our department. So Jaclyn Perez, she's now our assistant director, planning coordinator. Sarah Curry, who was promoted at the end of last year to planner two, so she remains there. And then we have Nate Cole over here, who's gone from planning technician to planner two. And Jenny Neal here, who has gone from administrative assistant to planning technician. They deserve a big congrats.
Congrats, everyone.
And we have our next work session. I almost want to check the date, is that on the? Sorry, I didn't write it. It is the 17th is our next work session. So often in years past, we cancel at least one of the summer ones just for summertime. So I will welcome that feedback if you guys still want to. And if so, whether that's June or July, for those that have kids or something planned, just. Oh, my goodness, congratulations, Ray.
With that, a motion to adjourn. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you all.